All right, you're all set to begin.
All right, I will call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, seven P M. To all persons interested in or affected by the action of the zoning board of appeals, you hereby notified pursuant to section eleven of chapter forty-eight, the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and all amendments thereto, that a public hearing on the following appeals will be held again Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. The zoning board of appeals public hearing will be held by remote participation methods. Public access this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. The meeting will be televised via Xfinity Channel Eight or High Definition Channel one zero seven-two. It may also be accessed via the government access channel livestream on the Town of Barnstable's website, H T T P colon slash slash streaming eighty-five dot Town of Barnstable dot U S slash cablecast, public site slash watch slash one question mark, channel equal sign, number one. Real-time access zoning board of appeals meeting is available by utilizing Zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID provided. Public comments can be addressed to the zoning board of appeals by utilizing this Zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID. The Zoom link is H T T P S colon slash slash Town of Barnstable dash U S dot Zoom dot U S slash J slash eight-two-eight-one-four-seven-six-nine-six-zero-five, or calling eight-eight-eight-four-seven-five-four-four-nine-nine, and entering the meeting ID eight-two-eight-one-four-seven-six-nine-six-oh-five. Applicants or representatives, individuals required or entitled to appear before the zoning board of appeals may appear remotely and may participate through accessing the link or telephone number provided above. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentation should be submitted in advance of the meeting to anna dot Brigham at town dot barnstable dot M A dot U S, so that they may be displayed for remote public access viewing. Copies of the application are available for review by calling five oh eight eight six two four six eight two, or emailing anna dot Brigham at town dot barnstable dot M A dot U S. We'll start off with introduction of board members. Herb Bodensteak.
Hi, I'm present.
Paul Pennard.
Present.
Mark Hanson.
Present.
Aaron Webb.
Present.
Denise Johnson.
Manny Al.
Present.
And Larry Hurwitz.
Present.
And I'm Jacob Dewey. So everyone here except for Denise. Notice to record this meeting of zoning board of appeals is being recorded, broadcast on the Town of Barnstable Government Access Channel in accordance with M G L Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty. I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, please make their presence known. Appears no one. We don't have any minutes to approve today. We had refused the minutes, I think Jenna didn't we, but we'll we'll have those on the agenda next time.
Um, there were two sets of minutes on the agenda. May eighth and twenty-second.
Were those on the posted agenda, not the agenda for members, maybe?
Well, Anna may have forgotten to put them on the agenda for members. That's okay. We can do them next time. That's fine.
Okay, yeah, they're not on there. So we'll go to old business. Appeal number two thousand and twenty-four dash zero zero nine. Brian M. Bun and Jeffrey A. Creedon have petitioned for a variance pursuant to section two forty dash fourteen E bulk regulations in the R C one in R F residential districts and section two forty dash one twenty-six variance provisions. The petitioner seek a variance to the front and side yard setback requirement to build an accessory structure, a pool house, in the northwest corner of their lot adjacent to their existing in-ground pool and existing walkway and hard-scape patio areas and retaining walls. Petitioners propose to reduce the front yard setback to twelve point eight, where thirty feet is required, and the side yard setback to seven point seven feet, where fifteen feet is required. Subject property is located at one fifty-seven Pompanesett Road, Kewett, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's Map, zero one nine, at parcel zero seven nine. It's located in the residence at R F zoning district. This was continued from April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, and May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. Can we assign members to this, didn't we? As we heard.
Yeah, we had, um.
Yes, it was.
Manny, Aaron, Mark, and Larry.
Yep.
Okay. Attorney Nickerson, I believe I'm handing it over to you.
It was actually, sorry Jake, this was the, um, continued, or withdrawal request was sent via email with, uh, within the forty-eight hour window, so it was Attorney Creedon, and I believe he's not showing.
Okay. Uh, I will make a motion to withdraw appeal number two thousand and twenty-four dash zero zero nine without prejudice. Five seconds.
I'm second, Jeff.
Uh, roll call vote. Herb Bodensteak.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Manny Al.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. So that item is withdrawn. Uh, moving on to appeal number two thousand and twenty-four dash zero two zero, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC has applied for a special permit pursuant to two forty dash one oh eight. Antennas permitted in the special permit in all zoning districts and two forty dash one twenty-five zoning board of appeals. The applicant is proposing to extend the existing cell tower by fifteen feet and allocate its wireless facility at the site pursuant to the Federal Spectrum Act and the Town of Barnstable zoning ordinance. The subject property is located eight thirty Wakeby Road, Marston Mills, as shown on Assessor's Map, zero three, zero one three, zero zero three. It's located in the residence at R F zoning district. Um, so sitting on this will be our regular members, myself, Herb Bodensteak, Paul Pennard, Mark Hanson, then Aaron Webb.
Mister Chairman, real quick, um, are you able to open meeting materials? I'm I'm getting a sign-in box here, or David?
I've got that all day long.
I'm getting.
I have some open.
You do? Sorry, it says, you must specify server in order to log in. I'm just wondering if that's on your end.
Which, are you clicking on the, um, on the posted agenda or the members' agenda? I don't know if it matters.
Um, I will check and see. I'll I'll log out, log back in and see.
I I had one brief problem, but I just tried it again and it worked, so.
Let me try, hold on.
Mark, the log-out, login didn't work for me today.
No.
You might try the link directly from the Z B A website instead of from any agenda.
Okay, yeah, I tried both agendas. I can't pull it up. Um, I'll try to go from the other side. So go in through the town site?
Yes.
Jake, if you want to, I mean, Mister Chairman, if you want to keep moving, I'll I'll just try to get in through this.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we have, um, you know, everyone has what they need if we're going to move forward with it. Um, or if there's members that, if other members are able to have access, could assign different members too. Um, is Attorney Pair here? I believe that's who is.
It is going to be Attorney, uh, Dolan, uh, replacing Attorney Pair.
From this one?
Okay. Is he here?
Yes, yeah, Michael Dolan again. I'm sorry. Are you, are you referencing Ed Perry, who is not here, and I'm counseling his place? I'm his partner?
Okay, yep, we'll hand it over to you.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, do you want to wait to make sure people are up to speed, or?
Is, is Mark the only one that can't, isn't able to get in? Or other people having issues seeing the documents?
Larry, are you, are you, media materials, Larry?
No, I'm fine. I, I, I can come home today eventually.
I mean, again, Mark, if you can't get, if someone else, if one of our alternates did, we can, we can assign an alternate.
Yeah, why don't you do it for this one? It's still loading. I'm on the page, but it's still loading. So what if we, if there's just an alternate for this?
Okay, so Aaron, you got in, right?
Yep.
Paul, you got in? Jeffrey, Herb, you got in?
Yep.
Okay. And Manny, did you get in?
Yep.
All right, so we'll have Manny sit in place of Mark.
So, Mister Chairman, if I'm going to be on the panel, I want to make a slight disclosure. Uh, many, 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 many moons ago, I practiced law at the law firm of Brown, Redneck, Fried and Gassner, where Attorney Dolan is a partner currently. I don't think it's any issues. It's more than twenty-five years ago, so, but I thought I'd put it on the record.
I think that's fine. Attorney Dolan, is that acceptable on your?
That's, that's great. Hello, Manny.
Hello, Mike.
I've been here thirty years, so we must have overlapped a little bit.
Yep.
Attorney Dolan, whenever you're ready to give us your brief.
Sure. Um, so, uh, once again, my name's Mike Dolan. Uh, I am counsel, uh, to the applicant New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, otherwise known as A T and T. Um, A T and T holds FCC licenses to operate a wireless telecommunications network throughout the country, including here in the Commonwealth. A T and T currently has a gap in coverage in the area around Wakeby Road, uh, and did a search for where they might be able to locate antennas, um, in order to help fill that gap. Thankfully, uh, my client was able to identify an existing, um, one hundred and forty-foot, uh, one hundred and forty-four-foot tower upon which, if it extends it by, um, uh, fifteen feet, it will be able to locate its antennas on the top, uh, and then be able to provide the needed coverage. Under the, uh, town's zoning bylaw, a, uh, special permit would be the appropriate relief, relief we're also applying for, uh, in the alternative, an eligible facilities request. Um, what will happen here is with the fifteen-foot extension, we will attach nine antennas to the existing tower. Uh, we'll have some ground equipment in the form of a walk-in cabinet that will be within the existing, uh, enclosed, um, fenced compound, and then outside of that, we will be locating, locating a five-hundred-gallon propane tank for our generator, which will be inside the fenced-in area. That's a safety issue to have that outside of the compound. The compound is almost three hundred feet off the road. Uh, there's no real visual impact. What we're proposing to do will be a de minimis, uh, uh, addition to the existing tower, obviates the need for a new structure going in, in this area. Um, and we're, is that we're able to, uh, find this tower that will be able to help us, as I say, fill a, a gap in coverage that A T and T is experiencing in this area, Marston Mills.
Okay. Uh, do any, that, I guess, do any board members have any questions?
Uh, Attorney Dolan, this is Paul Pennard. There's already a propane tank there now, isn't, isn't there, inside the closure?
That, that would be for another carrier who has, uh, equipment, uh, on the existing tower. Each carrier gets its own, uh, generator and tank and is responsible for those.
Okay, thank you.
And that new tank, is that contained? Does that, you know, in terms of hazardous materials?
Excuse me?
The new tank is contained for, for hazardous materials? Cause I know you're the D P there, right?
Yes.
Correct. Um, and then I guess one other question that I had to the two thousand and seventeen site plan review, there was a concern about the height and the fire department requirement of the access road. Is that, was that, didn't come up again at the more recent site plan review?
It did not come up in any of our site plan review activities in advance of this meeting.
Okay. Um.
Mister Chairman.
And then, are you going to go to formal, or you've been to formal site plan review?
We would not be going to formal site plan review. Um, as I say, this, we're all, we're applying for an eligible facilities request, uh, and the special permit would be the functional, uh, uh, relief that would coincide with that request.
So that relief would bypass you from having to go to formal site plan review?
Yes, in the sense that it would be one or the other.
Okay, cause the building commissioner said that in the March twenty-fourth, the March eighth, two thousand and twenty-four letter, that formal site plan review is required. And I don't think that the request is for a variance from that, at this point, correct?
That's correct.
So how are you, how are you suggesting that it gets bypassed? For what process?
Well, it, it, from this standpoint, that federal law would supersede, uh, the local laws that would require both site plan approval and a special permit as two separate, uh, measures of relief. Uh, it, under this middle-income tax relief, uh, Spectrum Act, um, it's, it's an administrative proceeding that would be the adjudicatory, uh, body that would analyze, um, this application, and there would be one type of relief.
Okay. I guess I just don't see where, where it's, where we're referencing that someone's giving relief to what is written as a requirement from the building commissioner, but I, I guess I'll defer to legal on that.
Sure, I, 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 one of my, uh, colleagues, uh, at the site acquisition company, Jeff Delacollie is, uh, on the line, and Jeff, do you have anything you want to add in that regard as to the, uh, the history in that, um, those meetings in our, uh, site plan review efforts to date?
Thank you, um, Michael and Mister Chairman. Um, I really don't have that much to add. I, uh, as Mike alluded to, um, this typically falls under what's called a sixty-four oh nine, which is the eligible facilities request that as long as the existing structure extension, uh, does not exceed, uh, twenty feet in height, which is greater than the existing tower, it typically goes through a simplified process per, uh, the, uh, middle-class tax relief through the federal government. But it was never, it was never discussed prior to this meeting.
Well, it's, uh, from your site plan review in March, the building commissioner said that formal site plan review is required, and then it never was referenced again anywhere else. I'm not seeing anywhere where you're asking for relief from that, from us. You're telling me that the relief you're asking for encompasses that, that's fine, but I don't see where it does.
Yeah, what we're saying is that, uh, uh, you know, the, the municipality would choose which form of relief, uh, it deems necessary, and in this case, the bylaw speaks to, um, a special permit, and that's what we've applied for, not both.
But Attorney Dolan, the special permit rules require that the board find that a site plan has been reviewed and found approvable in accordance with Article nine of the Town zoning code. So this is circular. If you don't do the site plan review, I refer you to two forty, one fifty, one twenty-five C. It's actually a requirement that this board must find to approve this.
Yeah, I, I mean, that, this, the, the town's ordinance does not factor in, uh, the Spectrum Act, which is a federal superseding law, and in fact, the town is right now working on an amendment to its own bylaw to come up with zoning provisions that address, uh, an eligible facilities request under the Spectrum Act, so.
No, I get that, but you're, this application's been posted and noticed as a request for a special permit. And just following the, the steps, a special permit, and, and the subsection one twenty-five of the zoning bylaws requires that this board finds that a site plan has been reviewed and found approval in accordance with Article nine, which is the, the, the site plan review process. So i- i- if you're going for a special permit, you gotta make a decision. If you go for a special permit, you have, I think, to follow the site plan review process.
Okay, our, our understanding was in our discussions with, with the town that, uh, that informal site plan review, where the departmental heads analyzed our application, and then, uh, indicated that a special permit was the appropriate relief, then we went for the special permit. If you're suggesting that it's more involved than that, and we actually need site plan approval prior to, we would respectfully ask for a continuance, and we'll go get that in the interim.
Well, I, I, Mister Chairman, I, I guess I'm just look, sorry.
Yeah, well, I mean, just to clarify, so the building commissioner at your informal site plan review said the special permit process is what you need, and he also said formal site plan review is required as part of that, and that's listed there, and that's why that was sort of the reference there. So that would be the next step after the informal, and then you would have the list of any other waivers that would have come up at formal site plan review, if there's anything else that any of the departments find, so that we can grant this with everything and anything in case anything else is, is brought up.
Okay.
If you're, Attorney Dolan, if we, if we do continue it, I don't know, Jenna, do we need, we haven't opened for public comments. We don't need to hear public comment right now. We'll do that at, at a subsequent meeting, I think.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. Is that agreeable, Attorney Dolan?
Just make one comment, Mister Chairman.
Yeah, Aaron, go ahead.
I just, I just, real quick, on that same letter posted March eighth, Kate Moltenato, uh, senior planner, mentions that it's a modification of an existing variance. So, um, again, just, just for clarification reasons, that was her recommendation that the applicant, you know, modified the existing variance. So you guys are now applying for a special permit. I just was curious as to the confusion slash language there that Kate Moltenato laid out on that, um, site plan review letter as well. That's all.
If, if I may, I looked at that. I, I think when they went for the initial installation, they needed a variance. The special permit requires installation of, of antennae on existing structures, and that's why I think we're here. Is that right, Attorney Dolan? No, yeah, so the, the two separate avenues, I guess, Aaron. When they went for the first installation, they needed a variance, and.
Yeah, I understand. I guess I, yep.
Yep, anyway.
No, I, I guess I understand that. I just, it seems like if a variance was issued and.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, I'm good.
Go ahead. No, I was gonna say, unless other board members think there's another path here, I think we should, we suggest that we continue this. Attorney Dolan takes it to the formal site plan review to check that box, and then we can proceed with the special permit. Is that agreeable, Attorney Dolan?
It is. It, to the extent that this board feels like it can't grant an eligible facilities request absent a special permit or site plan approval, which you do have the authority to do, uh, we're glad to do that.
I mean, I think that's the requirement of the special permit process. Manny, don't you agree?
I agree, and this was posted and, and noticed to the public as a request for a special permit. To the extent you want to pursue a different avenue, that might be a separate application, Attorney Dolan.
Well, our application was both for an eligible facilities request and a special permit. So it's not as if this eligible facilities request just arose tonight. That was part of our application. It was and/or.
Okay. I, I would feel better knowing if there's any other departments, you know, if it goes through the special permit, I, if it goes through the site plan review process and.
That's fine.
I don't think Attorney, I, I don't think Building Commissioner Florence would have just thrown that in there as a requirement that was referenced a- as, as part of our process.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll do that.
Jenna, what do you think for timing, or what do you, what do you propose for a date?
July twenty-fourth has the first openings.
July twenty-fourth? I think site plan review meets twice a month, so is that too soon, Attorney Dolan, do you think?
Uh, perhaps. Um, could we go with the twenty-fourth for this meeting, and if we're not ready, uh, we can respectfully ask for a, an additional continuance?
Sure.
Is, is the twenty, is the, is the twenty-fourth an in-person meeting or a Zoom meeting?
It's a Zoom meeting. Is that okay, Paul?
I hope it's in, I hope it's in person. I want to come down to the Cape.
I'll make a motion to continue, twenty twenty-four dash zero two zero two, July twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, okay. Oh, wait, wait a minute now. If it's an in-person meeting, and you want to continue it at that point, then you have to appear in live. If it's via Zoom.
It's a Zoom, it's a Zoom meeting.
Okay.
Right, Jenna?
Thank you.
Yes, that's right.
So roll, roll call vote. Um, Aaron Webb.
I'm in favor.
Uh, Herb Bodensteak.
I'm in favor.
Manny Al.
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. So that continues the item and moves us along to our next.
Thank you, Attorney.
Order of business. Thank you, Attorney Dolan. Um, Israel Lopez, Marikin, has applied for a special permit to section two forty dash forty-seven-two accessory dwelling units eighty years. The applicant is proposing to construct a detached, three-bedroom, twelve-hundred square foot accessory dwelling unit. Subject property is located at forty-two Woodbury Ave, Hainis Math, as shown on Assessor's Map, three oh seven, at parcel zero seven-three. It's located in the residence B R P zoning district. It references this as appeal number two thousand and twenty-four dash zero two two. Um, so sitting on this will be our regular members, myself, Herb Bodensteak, Paul Pennard, Mark Hanson, and Aaron Webb. Uh, Mister Marikin. Are, is he here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. All right, give us the background on your, uh, request.
Well, what we're trying to do is build an additional detached, I do, that's, um, cause the reason is, I have people, my nephew is living in the main house, so we are losing our housing in Antucket, where I'm currently living now, because of my job. So the intention is to build this unit for my family, which my wife and the two kids, they're older than, the one is seventeen, the older one is twenty, twenty-two, twenty-two years old. Then, um, that's basically what I'm trying to do there. So that's my background right now.
Okay. Um, so you're asking for, um, relief because you want to have three bedrooms. How, can you give us a little background on, on the main house there, on the existing house?
I'm sorry?
Can you give us a little background on your existing house, on how big it is, how big rooms are in the other house that's already on the property?
Yeah, there is a five-bedroom house, and it's a family living in there, two kids, wife and a husband. So they're occupying the house, so I basically, I'm not using the main house, you know, so that's why I'm, I don't want to put them on the street or put them out of the house. So, because it's a family, which is important for me to keep families in housing, you know, so that's a little complicated, delicate situation for me. So it's easy for me to say then to leave or, you know, finish the contract or anything, but that's not what I wanted to do if it's the, if it's the possibility to build a new addition, a new house, a new detached unit, which is what the town's allows to build, and that would be basically for us, you know, for my family. So I, I'll be, I'll be living in there, so I may have to move in there.
So you're gonna live in the new unit, and you're gonna continue to rent the existing unit?
Yes, correct. That's basically, yeah, because it's a family. I will, it'd be different type of people living in there. I will, you know, ask for the house, but that's, no, I, I don't see a way. They may get a house eventually. I don't know when, but that's, uh, that's the situation. If I have a capability to build a new, and, and a new unit, stay there, and it's actually will help me out for retirement plans as well. So that's the intention, not trying to put any more people in the property, which I don't really like putting more people in the neighborhood. It's, it's just, uh, just me, my wife, and one boy, I say, because the, the other one is older, so he probably lives on, you know, to do his own life. And the family have two kids. They're little, they're seven and six years old, I believe, and, uh, the wife. I believe, and, uh, the wife, so that's pretty much what I can tell you.
Okay. Can you give a quick background on the detached one-car garage and the pool?
Well, the pool is a proposal, but really trying to, I mean, I don't think I will be able to, to do it anyways. You know, if I suppose it was do, I would do it, but I, I don't know if I will have the money for it, you know, honestly. So it's, it's a dream that I have, but you know, like, you want to have a retired house or, you know, rest of your life, so you would like to have something like that, well, you know, but that's a dream, so I'm not trying to. I'm not forcing to do that. That's in case I have the funds to do it, but, you know, that's pretty much.
But you're asking for relief here for that to be done as well?
If I could afford, I would like to, you know, honestly, you know, it's a dream for everybody who can afford, who would like to do something like that, but it's a like I said, it's not my priority to do it. It's secondary thing that I could happen. Eventually I will fly for it, but yeah, I just said, put it under my, my dream, you know, that was my dream, that's.
Okay, does there any board members that have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah.
Mark, go ahead. Oh, sorry. Mark, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, uh, the application states six hundred square foot, foot, uh, ADU. Now we're at thirteen hundred?
Um, the, the public notice says twelve.
It's twelve hundred.
Okay, the application says six hundred.
No, that's incorrect, because when we give the numbers, you know, that's what I told. Well, this is what happened when you measure, so it's a six by thirty by twenty feet. So that's six hundred, but this is, it's a floor, one floor, so she added up on, it's a twelve hundred. You know, if you added the two levels, you know.
Okay.
The persons.
Requirements for ADU are nine hundred square feet, which is two bedrooms. Um, why do, why do we need twelve hundred square feet?
That's a good question, uh, because I have my, it's the two boys and my wife and I, so we'll be using three bedrooms. That's why I submitted a special permit for it. And I know that's, uh, that it requires a special permit for it, because I have two boys, my wife and I.
Okay.
But there's no reason you couldn't go into the main house and build a small ADU for rental purposes. You said the main house is five bedrooms, correct?
Yes, correct, correct. Um, the only thing is, uh, when my nephew, my wife nephew, when she, he asked me for the house, he, he asked me for if he can stay with the family. He wants a privacy for the family, for the kids, all that stuff. That's the only reason why. And I definitely, I see the, that I could, you know, it's is we'll be sharing the room, but you know, you want privacy if you could, you know, so I understand that point, which is understandable, but if I could afford to build this for the future, why to have some accounts for my retirement? But that's the intention, pretty much what I'm trying to do, you know.
Okay, Mark, do you have a comment?
Yeah, kind of along the same line. So we've got a five-bedroom main house that only appears to be occupied maybe one or two rooms. Um, one is there being a provision with the town to, uh, again, we've had this before where the question becomes, what do you do with the existing bedrooms? A- as far as use, because it doesn't look like there's an expansion of the septic system here. So are we peeling off three and bringing three to the new unit? I don't understand why it doesn't take the main house, make the second house smaller, and make it two bedrooms, and that becomes the rental. It would be sufficed easily for a family with two small children. I'm, I'm not seeing, it, it seems backwards to me. I don't, and, and it just.
Question forum, and then we'll deliberate when we get further along.
Yeah, that's fine, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Elton, question forum before we go to public comment? All right, so let's open public comment. I believe there may be some people here to speak to this. If you want to speak to it, just unmute, uh, give us your name and address and then, um, make your comment.
Uh, hello, my name is Jeff Brown. I'm in Abutter, fifty Woodbury Avenue. We also own a property at forty-six Woodbury Avenue, which is part of the shared driveway. That the, the subject property has a right-of-way over my property and then an easement over forty-four Woodbury, or, yeah, forty-four Woodbury. Um, we're, we're in opposition to this. I mean, un- unfortunately, they're not asking for an ADU. They're asking to build a second home on the property. Um, you know, it, it, it's not, it does not meet the intent of the ADU law. It's, you know, over nine hundred bedroom, it's over nine hundred square feet, it's not two bedrooms. It, it, it sounds like there may be more than two adults, which were all the intent of these ADU rules, and, you know, owner occupied right now. The owner doesn't even live on the property. Um, and, and we've seen a significant traffic increase on this, you know. Remember, the driveway is a, um, an easement across our, our properties. And, uh, the, the amount of traffic, I mean, he's got six parking spots listed on the plan. Um, you know, those are all-new cars. We, we already have issues with speeds. They improved the driveway, and now they, you know, they drive way too fast down it. We, we had never improved the driveway because we wanted to keep the speed slow with all the children in the neighborhood, so. Uh, we are in opposition to this, uh, variance, and we submitted a written, uh, a, uh, yeah, written documentation.
Yeah, thank you. We'll reference that, uh, in a second. Uh, is there anyone else that wants to speak to this? Just unmute, introduce yourself and, and speak.
Uh, I just had a quick, I just had a quick question. My name's Michael Creed, forty-four Woodbury Avenue, which is, you know, that address that Jeff just said, where the easement goes through. If this new building were hypothetically built, what would the address be on that building? Because I would imagine legally that the easement gives the right-of-way to a singular address that has to go through it to get to their property. Would this be like four, I forget the number, forty-eight, forty-eight A or something like that? Because that would technically be a different address, and I feel like there's gotta be something funky with that, because it is a private road, and the agreement, I think, is for the singular home, I would imagine, because it's not like an in-law apartment they're adding to the house. If that makes sense.
Uh, that would, BPW would, would handle how they're, I'm not sure how they're addressing ADUs, but they would handle the addressing and, and work with nine-one-one on how it gets addressed.
The fire, yes.
It's sort of before us. Uh, is there anyone else with a comment? All right, we'll wait a second, but seeing, now and I'll just reference, so there was the, um, written documentation from Jeff and Lori Brown at fifty Woodbury Ave. on, uh, the twentieth of June, twenty twenty-four. Um, and then there was, um, a letter and some additional, um, information uh, sent from the Mitchells, um, again, in opposition. That was dated from Lisa Mitchell, um, June twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Um, is there anyone else here live in person that would like to speak to this before we close?
I think Lisa Mitchell is not. She's in the meeting, but I think her mic wasn't working, so she might have tried to call in. She wants to speak, I'm not sure.
Yeah, sure.
David, is there any? I see her in the room here.
Yeah, I don't think her computer, microphone, I think she, I don't. Lisa, try to unmute, if you can hear me.
Yeah, she had a six-three area code, and I let that in, so I don't know if that, I'm trying to ask her to unmute now. So I know there were decent, there were a few people that wanted to speak to this, that I wrote their names down.
Can you manually unmute her, David, or no?
Uh, I can't do that. I'm just asking to unmute, but.
All right. Uh, she's gonna, let me see if you can hear. I have her on speakerphone, so Lisa, can you talk and?
Can you hear me through his phone?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so, um, our house originally owned all that land. My grandfather sold his brother for a dollar that lot. So it's, in my opinion, and I had talked to a lawyer, that's like a grandfathered, non-conforming law. Um, it's only been occupied by a single family up until when Mr. Marakine well, I mean, purchased it a couple of years ago. This is the first time I've actually seen Mr. Marakine. Um, so the garage that you see on the property is original to the home. The previous owner enlarged the home. Um, think making the attic the fifth bedroom or something like that. So to second what Mr. Brown said, we've seen an increased amount of traffic down the road from adults, multiple adults using the property. I have seen the two little boys that he says are his nephews. Um, I've only been able to talk to the babysitter when I've gone over to the property to complain about the speed with which people have driven down the road. Um, and, you know, he's saying now he's gonna live in one of the properties, because I know that that's a requirement. I asked for the, um, what is it, the staff report? And I saw on page two eleven that it said either the principal dwelling or the ADU, but not both can be rented. So I'm questioning the actual intent for these properties. Um, you know, we like I said, I just, I just, to echo what other people in the neighborhood have seen. Multiple increase of properties, multiple adults seem to be using the property already. Um, and I sent pictures just like, um, Jeff Brown did of what the property looks like, so. I just think this whole, this whole plan, especially a special permit to make it larger, to basically use every inch of buildable, and it's moving the garage to his front yard. It's just not, it's not acceptable to my family.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. We appreciate your, um, comment. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak to this before we close public comment and deliberate?
Good afternoon, good evening, thank you. I am speaking for, uh, Linda Woodbury Hurt at forty-eight Woodbury. Uh, the end of the driveway does abut the intersection that comes, uh, onto the pri- town road of Woodbury. It's the end of the shared driveway that serves forty, forty-two, forty-four, and forty-six, and also runs along the property at thirty-eight, which um, is kind of like a hotspot coming out of that driveway with the speed. Generally, they come out and they come in without stopping as if it's a continuation of a long road, so speed and safety has been a concern. Um, and even though we've, uh, tried to motion people to slow down, it doesn't seem to have any effect. So increased use with more cars, more people, uh, it just seems to be more of a, it's gonna be an issue. And additionally, the, the Mr. Marakine spoke about importance of family all living together. I'm not sure if you've read the letters, but these entire properties on this end of Woodbury Ave. is historically the Woodbury family, which we have, all are part of. Um, the names may have changed, but all of our family is still on Woodbury Ave. That original Doherty House, which is forty-four, originally was a Woodbury family member. And then through the years, the properties were split up for whatever reasons, but we have been here as family and will be here as family, and that property at forty-two Woodbury has changed through the years, unfortunately, so uh, our concern is the town, how, if something gets further built, how is the town gonna manage that it stays an ADU and stays whatever it is? Because if it gets improved and sold and whatever, why, it could potentially become an Airbnb. Could it, the basement be finished so it has more living room? Um, i- it's just a concern, like, once it gets put in place, if it's, and we really are strongly wanting it to remain a single-family property. Um, because I don't think in the future the town will not have any ability to manage it or maintain it or follow up on it, because historically in our entire neighborhood, anything that has changed, the town says, well, it happened and we can't do anything, so, but we have been here. Many of the board members probably have never been on our road before, will probably never, ever come on our road before, and will be long gone from the board and maybe even in Barnstable to even have to deal with what your decision to let happen on this property is, but we will be here. So that's kind of where we're at. Um, uh, so we, we really would wish that you do not grant this, you know, this application, and hopefully that it stays a, uh, stays a, a single-family house. Thank you.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Um, is anyone else who wants to speak before we close public comment? All right, I'll make a motion to close public comment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote on closing public comment. Aaron Webb?
I'm in favor.
Mark Hanson?
In favor.
Paul Tenard?
In favor.
Herb Bodenstich?
Favor.
And I'm also in favor. So public comment is closed. It brings it back to the board for deliberation. Does anyone have any thoughts on this? Go ahead, Aaron.
Yeah, I just, uh, we, you know, this, this is gonna become, uh, much more of an issue down the road here, but, um, I did travel down Woodbury, um, in the last few days to have a look at it, um, drove down the easement road by accident. I do apologize. Um, regardless, it's, um, yeah, the, the, the ADU requirements are nine hundred square feet, two-bedroom, and that's not what this is, so I am, uh, not in favor of, uh, granting this variance to the applicant, unfortunately. I, I, I understand his plight and I appreciate it. Um, you know, there's gotta be some other ways to circumvent, um, the issues that are before you, and again, if you have an, an older son who's getting ready to move out and start his own life, then a two-bedroom ADU would suffice, um, you know, and that's a by right, as long as you fit within the parameters of the, of the, of the bylaw that allows it, so. Uh, nine hundred square feet is the maximum, uh, square footage and two bedrooms, and it's, I think this is a pretty simple call on my end.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, so, uh, I want to say the same thing. So basically, I, I really don't think is proposed. It really doesn't meet the spirit or intent of the the bylaw, plus we're looking at under half an acre, point four-two acre lot size with a proposed eight bedrooms. Um, I just don't see even from a health, health department standpoint, never mind our bylaw, how the, how this would be viable. Um, I, I just don't, I think it should stick closer to the, um, to the two-bedroom, nine hundred square feet, mi- minimally, even if there was enough land there. So I, I would not be in favor of this, I don't believe, or swing that way, as proposed.
Paul or Herb, any other comment?
Uh, yeah, I'd just like to bring everybody's attention to the rental ordinance that was, um, imposed about fifteen years ago. And it was imposed because of overcrowding issues. So we kind of have the opposite issue now where we want to, uh, provide housing. But, uh, this goes against the whole intention of the ADU, um, philosophy, uh, and, and the rental ordinance. Um, not to mention, I mean, I've read the letters from the Abutters, and, uh, it's a real unhappy situation, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Paul, did you have any comment?
No, I, I, um, I don't see a need for anything, uh, other than, um, holding to the, uh, town's ADU, uh, uh, code.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with the other board members. It was just not the intent of the ADU bylaw. This is a, a proposed second home on the property. If they had enough land and they could subdivide it and build two houses there, by all means have at it, but the, the intent is that these, these are small, um, incidental second dwelling spaces. So I, I just don't see it as. So I, I just don't see it as coming close to fitting what, what it is. And I, I don't think it really works. Go ahead, Aaron.
Is it, can we ask the applicant if he would like to withdraw without prejudice at this point?
That was, that was my next plan.
Um, so, yeah, go ahead.
Do you want to withdraw? You, you don't have, it doesn't sound like you have the, the vote to pass this. So would you like to withdraw it or would you like us to vote on it? If, if we do take a, a negative vote, you wouldn't be able to come back to it for two years.
Um, but I understand all your point of view of everyone and even the neighbors, what I say. And, um, like I say, it's, uh, my intention is have that, is my dream house, that's all right, my intention is. And as I say, everyone makes their dreams according to the capacity you have, the ability or whatever you can, or whatever you can call. So other people will, um, put, uh, limits on your life. And even if they can afford to do stuff, so the neighbors will limit you, your dreams because they can't afford it to do it. It's a common human's way to act, which is what I know. Um, I'm okay with that. You know, whatever they can say is fine. Uh, there is another, I understand your, the, you know, they, they worry about the speed, they worry about little stuff, blah, the gravel, the
Not what's before us here. Uh, we're not, we're not regulating speed or anything. This is simply looking at our ADU bylaw and what you have proposed. We all feel is well beyond what the town has, has made as an option of an avenue to build an ADU. So we're prepared to vote no, that we're not going to approve it. If you would like to withdraw it without a vote, you can. That's up to you. I'm, I'm giving you that option.
You should take him up, you, you should, but Israel, you should take him up on this option. Withdraw the application without prejudice, therefore you can review it, make changes, and come back before us, before two years is up.
Or before three years, um, with the nine, with two years?
Two, yeah. But if we vote no, you can't come back without, until two years. So you're smart to withdraw without prejudice now and review it, make changes to the application to fit within the bylaw and come back for us.
Yeah, that, that's the thing. I'm, I'm, I'm new on this. I, it's my first house in my life.
Yeah, no problem, no prob-
What's happening? So I will drop this and then come back and review this and do a new plans with the nine hundred square feet. And, uh, yeah, I mean, whatever is approved for this, you know, I'm not trying to force to build anything, that's not
Yep, yep, and that's fine. And again, you, you can discuss that with the town and with the, you know, the, the building department and so forth about the regulations for that, whether or not you have the setbacks and all that jazz, check with Board of Health and everything. But so, can I make a motion that the applicant would like to withdraw his, um, application without prejudice?
Is that what he wants to do?
So Manny, uh, I mean, sorry, Aaron has made a, um, motion to withdraw appeal number, uh, what is it? Twenty twenty-four dash zero two-two. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
I'd like to, I'd like to make sure that, that the applicant understands and agrees to a withdrawal.
That's okay. Israel, is that something you'd like to do or would you want us to vote on it tonight?
No, that's what I would like to do because that's what it's, what would you do? So, so what would you do, if I bid me?
I, I can't answer that. We've, we've, we've just laid out the two options. There's two, there's two options for you. So you can withdraw without prejudice means you can come back with a revised application within any time going forward. If we vote no, you can't come back for two years. Those are your two options.
I, I know.
So you, we can either vote tonight?
No, no vote.
Okay, so we
Hope for today.
Okay, yeah, withdrawal request.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion to withdraw from Aaron. Mark second it. Um, roll call vote on the withdrawal. Aaron Webb?
I'm in favor.
Mark Hanson?
I'm in favor.
Paul Pinnard?
In favor.
Herb O'Beal?
opposed.
And I am in favor. Uh, so the appeal number twenty twenty-four dash zero two-two is withdrawn without prejudice. Thank you, Israel. I appreciate your time and effort.
Thank you for Thank you.
All right, moving on to appeal number twenty twenty-four dash zero two-three. Two ninety-seven Winter Street LLC has applied for a modi- to modify special permit number nineteen sixty-eight dash one three five to allow the proposed alteration of a dentist's office into a thousand thirty-five square foot, three-bedroom apartment. The subject property is located at two ninety-seven Winter Street, Hyannis, Mass., as shown on Assessor's Map three ten as parcel two zero eight. Located in the residence B RV zoning district. Um, do we do the variance at the same time? Um,
That could be a request, Mr. Chairman.
Attorney Nickerson, are you, um, here for this, Attorney Kenny?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Our request would be to take them up concurrently, to please the chair.
Yeah, all right. So in, um, additionally, in appeal number twenty twenty-four dash zero two-four, two ninety-seven Winter Street LLC has petitioned to amend variance numbers nineteen sixty-six dash zero four-five and nineteen seventy-two dash zero nine-six pursuant to section two forty-eleven A. Principal use in the RV district, the petitioners seek to amend the variances to permit the proposed alteration of the dentist's office to a, into a thousand thirty-five square foot, three-bedroom apartment. Subject property is located at two ninety-seven Winter Street, Hyannis, Mass., as shown on Assessor's Map three ten as parcel two zero eight. It's located in the residence B RV zoning district. Uh, sitting on this will be our regular members, Aaron, Mark, Paul, Herb, and myself. Unless anyone wants to go home or, um, or I guess you're at home. If anyone wants to knock off or doesn't want to, Manny and Larry are both here.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to jump out. Larry can take, take my place and I'll sit and watch.
Okay.
Or, or anyone you assign.
Yep, I'll take it.
Attorney Nickerson, Attorney Kenny, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, for the record, my name is Patrick Nickerson. I'm from the Law Office of John W. Kenny with an office in Centerville. He is present with me along with Stephen Park, who is in attendance. He is the manager of two nine-seven, uh, Winter Street LLC, the applicant before you. And we're seeking a pair of modifications. Um, as I'm speaking, Genevieve, could you please bring up the plans? Would you be able to share your screen so we could refer to them when the time comes?
Give me one minute.
Okay, thank you. Um, but, uh, in the interim, essentially what we're doing is we're, we're, we're hoping you will approve requested modifications to, uh, rather old, uh, special, rather old special permit and two variances which allow the property to presently operate as a mixed commercial residential building featuring a first-floor dentist slash orthodontist office and a second-floor one-bedroom apartment. As I'm going to be demonstrating shortly, the majority of the alterations to the building are in the interior, meaning there is really no change in gross floor area. Most of the activity is taking place within the interior walls. There are two exceptions to that. There is a proposed, uh, staircase being added to the right elevation and a proposed removal of a rear vestibule, which formally allowed, uh, dentists and orthodontist patients to escape the elements, but really has no, uh, practical use in a, you know, for residential use that we're proposing. That would be removed and the setbacks would be adjusted slightly, but they would, uh, well remain within the current requirements under the zoning ordinance.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Before you get too far, just, um, David, could you give me permission to share my screen, please?
Yeah, one second.
Thank you.
I'm gonna keep, keep going until we're ready for that plan. Um, so the property was created by a plan in nineteen twenty-four, uh, recorded a Plan Book fourteen, page forty-one. Um, uh, according to the assessor's records, the original structure was built in nineteen thirty. We did include a copy of the GIS overhead map from the year nineteen fifty-one, nineteen fifty-two in your materials showing the structure on the property. Uh, in nineteen sixty-six, the first, uh, form of relief was granted by this board. Variance number nineteen sixty-six forty-five permitting the use of the dentist's orthodontist's office. Um, so, okay, great. So Genevieve, could you scroll down a little? I'll switch gears slightly to just go over the site plan. So, uh, I'm sorry, could you scroll back up? Oh, thank you. So, um, so the, the type is a little small, but essentially you can see the, the staircase next to the existing building on the southeast corner of the plan. This is being proposed to be added to the existing dwelling, so the staircase presently does not exist. Uh, there's a window up on the second floor that would be converted to a egress door to allow access to the stairs. And it would reduce the front yard setback from sixty-two point six to, I believe it's fifty-eight point one. Just over four feet. And then in the rear, um, there's a rear vestibule being removed, which would increase the rear setback from presently forty-six point five feet to forty-seven point six feet. So these are the only two planned exterior alterations to the building. Everything else is remaining as it presently exists. Uh, Genevieve, could you scroll down so I could show the modifications to the interior? You can zoom out just a little bit, too. Okay. And then maybe just scroll down a little. Okay, um, so what you're looking at right now is the proposed first floor and the proposed second floor. The proposed first floor shows three bedrooms, um, with a kitchen. In lieu of the existing dentist's space, there is no change to that full bathroom on the first floor. Then as you look to the right of the screen, this is the proposed second floor. Very few alterations are being made here. You do see the new staircase that's being proposed along with egress door and then certain smoke, uh, CO detectors being installed in the second floor. Genevieve, if you could scroll up a little bit just to show existing conditions. Um, so on the right, we show the existing conditions for the existing first-floor apartment. Looks very similar to the proposed, absent this second, um, staircase with egress door. And then on the, in the left, the center cross-section shows the existing conditions for the, um, dentist's office as it's presently constituted, including the rear vestibule there to sort of to the top of the cross-section. And Genevieve, if you could scroll down to the third sheet, we can just review the changes in elevations from existing to proposed. And if you could zoom out just a little, that would be great. Okay, so looking at this all at once, might be a little difficult to follow. But if you look at the existing front elevation on the top left, you can compare it to the proposed front elevation in the middle of the second row on the bottom. Uh, so you, you sho- you show the difference in the elevations as it, as it would appear from the street with the second, uh, with the staircase rather. Then you can match the other elevations as you please. So the existing right elevation in the middle of the top row shows the rear vestibule and the proposed right elevations located in the bottom row farthest to the right showing both the vestibule being removed and showing the proposed staircase. And lastly, you have the, well, you have the existing rear elevation showing the vestibule. Uh, Genevieve, if you could scroll down a little more? And the proposed rear elevation, rear elevation at the bottom row in the center showing the vestibule being removed. And same with the existing left elevation, the vestibule being removed. So in total, there are very few, thank you, Genevieve, I don't think we need to share your screen anymore, but thank you. Um, so in total, there are very few exterior alterations being proposed. You have the removal of vestibule, the addition of a staircase, the rest of the proposed modifications are coming into the interior of the property. Um, we submit that if approved, the property would be brought into greater conformity with the current zoning ordinance and that it would eliminate, uh, commercial business use and make the use entirely residential. We believe that in order to grant the relief, the board must find, in your section two forty-one twenty-five, see that this board find the application for special permit falls within a category specifically authorized by the zoning board to grant a special permit. And that section two forty-one twenty-five allows for modification of the special permit. Uh, to, to issue a special permit, the board must find that the proposed project, based on the evidence presented, does not derogate from the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and that is not substantially more detrimental to the public good or neighborhood affected. To that end, we submit that the project as proposed does not generate more traffic than the previous use, wires no more parking than the previous use, and that because it does not expand the existing building's footprint and does not increase the existing gross floor area and has little impact on the existing setbacks, um, it would in total bring the property into greater conformity with the zoning ordinance and the requirements of the RB district. Um, Steve Park is here. He does not have plans to occupy the property. So the result is that it would be a two-family dwelling with a three-bedroom unit on the first floor and a one, one-bedroom unit on the second floor. Because of the limited changes that are being proposed and the limited impacts that we expect would flow from the pro- project if, uh, um, approved, um, we believe the board can find the project does not derogate from the spirit and the intent of the ordinance. And the board can find that a two-family dwelling is not substantially more detrimental to the public good or the neighborhood affected than the existing mixed commercial residential building. Now, with respect to the variance, uh, we submit that the granted variances run with the land, that we have the benefit of the variances and that we submit that, um, under section two forty-one twenty-five, B one C, uh, the Zoning Board of Appeals is authorized to grant a variance, uh, as with the three, um, prongs, as you are all familiar with them. Um, but we submit that we don't need to establish all three prongs here where we're seeking modification of the variance as well as the modification of the special permit. I believe that concludes my presentation. I would defer to John Kenny if he has anything else to add. Otherwise, I'll attempt to answer your questions as best I can.
I'll just clarify a little bit on the variance, which is basically the very, as Attorney Nickerson stated, the variance runs with the land. One of the conditions of the variance is that it be used as a dental or the dentist's office. Uh, that's the condition we're seeking to modify. We're simply seeking to switch it from the commercial use to a residential use. Yes, it makes it a two-family and a single-family zone, but we believe it brings it more in, in line with both the, uh, existing, uh, zoning, uh, in the sense that it would be two residential uses as opposed to a residential and commercial mixed use. And also, this is walking distance to downtown Hyannis and it kind of goes in with a new, new zone that the town has put in trying to put housing within walking distance of the downtown infrastructure. So we think this kind of goes in line with where the town is moving. And we ask that you, uh, grant the relief requested and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Attorney Penny. Um, does any board members have questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair, can all members of the panel ask questions?
Of course, yes.
Uh, Attorney Nickerson, would this be a multi-family dwelling?
That would be the result. Yes, sir.
It would be a two-family.
Well, it's two multi- That was actually my question.
Well, I, I didn't know if you were getting, uh, 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 one and two families have one category and once you get up over, uh, uh, into multifamily, it can be deemed to be commercial. I, I didn't know if that's where we were going, Mr. Hells.
Yeah, it, that's actually the, there's a section in the bylaws that talks about residence Bs to allow for multifamily dwellings. There are certain things the board has to find. I guess I'm just wondering if a two-family unit qualifies as a multi-dwelling.
I don't think from a building standpoint it does. I believe it's one and two-family and then it's three and on. A- and that's also a trigger, trigger for things like sprinklers and things like that. Anything beyond a, a two-family, um, triggers a whole bunch more.
Two is two units. In our zoning code, definitely more than one, multi-unit. We don't have a zoning multi-unit. We don't have a zoning designation for two family, one family, two family and multifamily.
Yeah, that's just it's not, it's not for zoning, really.
All right, it's just that in, in residence B, this is in, in section two forty twenty one B, it talks about requirements for multifamily units and residence B. B and I wasn't sure if that was part of this. So I don't know if Attorney Nicholson, that's something you want to address or maybe that's the answer. That section doesn't apply because this is not a multifamily unit?
Think that's the answer. I specifically, my memory was triggered in the fact I specifically chose to use two family dwelling is it's because I, my recollection is that the ordinance defines a multifamily as being in excess of two units.
Thank you.
Any other board members have questions for the applicant?
Well, I'd just say that the zoning, the zoning board of appeal history with this property negates any need to look at multifamily use. It goes back to the sixties where it was turned into a a commercial and so I think we're okay with that.
Okay. Any other board members have?
Yeah, this may, this may clarify. Multifamily housing means a building with three or more residential dwelling units or two or more buildings on the same lot with more than one residential dwelling unit in each building. I don't know if that helps many.
That's our town definition?
That was that was mass.gov.
Yeah, that
to it. We have single family and we have multifamily in our town code. We don't have anything that speaks to it.
That, that's where I came out to, Mr. Chairman. And in, in section nine of that provision, it doesn't prohibit it. But it says in this residence district, multifamily dwellings. And in parentheses, it says apartments are allowed subject to the following, and it lists a number of conditions. And the apartments even seems to make it clear to me that, that they, they don't mean, you know, an apartment building, but multifamily dwellings. And again, sorry, I don't, I don't want to complicate this, but, but i- 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 if that section applies, it would seem to me that in this residence district, each of those conditions would have to be established under subsection nine. And Attorney Nicholson, I don't know if you looked at that, if, if you disagree and again, it, it, it turns on whether or not this is a multifamily dwelling.
So under, under section two forty one twenty eight, under definitions, there is two family dwelling defined as a detached residential building designed for and occupied by two families.
But it doesn't define what a multifamily dwelling is. That's what
I think that's following along the lines of the building code and it's, it's more than two.
Yes.
Single and two families are, are one category. And once you get above two, it puts you into a different category. And I think that's the intent of the ordinance.
Fair enough. Thank you. Thanks for indulging me.
And so this did not go to site plan review, is that correct? Because we're putting it in the one and two family category?
It's correct. I actually confirmed that with Commissioner Florence's office. To ensure that site plan review was not required and I was informed in an email that it wasn't.
All right, if anyone else, if no else, any questions, let's open public comment. Is anyone here to speak to this?
Hi, yes, my name is
Address for the record before you speak.
Steve Merlissina, fifty Oak Lane in Osterville. And I also have some rental properties in Hyannis as well. And I'm, I'm very much in support of this. I'm also the broker for this, just a full disclosure. And I actually had my teeth that do is Dr. Rosine's office years ago at two ninety seven Winter Street. So I was, he was my orthodontist back in the day. But I'm, I'm in favor for many reasons. The biggest one being is it really conforms to the, the neighborhood. The only thing that Patrick did a great job of explaining, the only thing that really is changing is the side stairs that go up on the right. The whole look and feel of the neighborhood is not being affected. Which is great. And obviously it's pretty much a win, win, win for the town. For the tenants that are going to live there and for the, for the landlord. So I think all around, it's pretty much exactly what the town is looking for. And it's doing it in a, an artful way that you're not just stacking a bunch of new units on top of each other. You're conforming, you know, I'd say artfully with, with the neighborhood and the, the feel of, of kind of what the town is looking for especially.
Awesome. Thank you. And then we did with two letters of support. One from, well, that's you, Steve. Merlissina. And then there was one. Attorney Kenny, that was a memo. And then Webb. It was David, I recall. David, yeah, David Webb, also in support of the project. Is anyone else to speak to this? Genevieve, and receive anything else beyond that, correct? All right, so I'll make a motion to close public comment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote and closing public comment. Comment Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Paul Bernard.
In favor.
Mark Hampton.
In favor.
Herb Boden Sieg.
In favor.
And I also am in favor. So I close the public comment. And now I guess we need to close the public hearing unless there's any other questions or testimony that you guys want to collect from the applicant. All right, seeing none, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call vote. Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Paul Bernard.
In favor.
Mark Hampton.
In favor.
Herb Boden Sieg.
I'm in favor.
And I'm also in favor. So that brings back the board for deliberations or findings. Anyone want to make a finding here? We don't need to make variance findings because we're modifying it is how Attorney Nicholson and Kenny have presented this. So I think it's doable.
So do we do it as the special permit with just a variance modification?
Yeah, we have to do both, but yeah.
We still have to do both, though.
So if someone wants to tackle one and then someone else can tackle the next one. Someone else jump.
I can, I had the special permit in front of me.
Okay, go for it. That's
With regard to special permit number two zero two four dash zero two three two nine seven Winter Street LLC, modification of special permit number nineteen sixty eight dash one three five. Two nine seven Winter Street LLC is applied to modify special permit nineteen sixty eight dash one three five to allow the proposed alteration of a dentist's office into thousand thirty five square foot three bedroom apartment. Subject property is located two nine seven Winter Street, Hyannis, Mass. Is located in residence B, RB zoning district. This special permit modification request is being heard in conjunction with two zero two four dash zero two four to amend existing variances. For all special permits, board is required to make general findings pursuant to two forty dash one twenty five C. Board should review the evidence presented by the applicant staff and members of the public. And after weighing such evidence is encouraged to articulate if and how the evidence contributes to each of the required findings. Number one, the application falls within a category specifically accepted in the ordinance for grant of special permit. Section two four zero dash one twenty five allows for a modification of special permit. Number two, after an evaluation of all the evidence presented, the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. Would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. I find that this is a generally, generally at a, an internal renovation. Bringing it more in line with the surrounding surrounding dwellings being apartments and single family homes. And would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. Number three, the single family nature of the property and of the accessory nature of the detached structure are preserved, which is the case. There'll be slight, slight modifications on the exterior, but nothing of any consequence. Those are my findings.
Last audio.
We can't hear you.
No, sorry.
Sorry, I have a second to approve the special permit modification with those findings. All right, Paul, second. Roll call vote in approving special permit modification. Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Paul Bernard.
In favor.
Mark Hampton.
In favor.
Herb Boden Sieg.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. Mark, special conditions?
Yes, I just had one question. Do we have to reference that the one bedroom apartment stays or is that implied? I, I know the, I know the question is just for the, the special permit to modify for the three bedroom renovation, but is anything changing on that top apartment?
I think just minor, minor interior modifications, but I, I, we would be happy to condition that the one bedroom apartment stays. It's probably a good idea since it goes back to the nineteen sixties.
Does that make sense, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, that makes sense. Jenna, do you sort of understand what? How he wants to add that?
Um, maybe we could just add a six saying that the current existing one bedroom apartment shall stay as a one bedroom apartment with minor modifications, interior modifications. Okay, so as shown on the plan, Mr. Hanson. Yes, as shown, okay. What is the date of that plan? That is dated March twentieth, twenty twenty four. Twenty twenty four. Okay, so special condition, suggested conditions number one through five and adding number six, that the one bedroom apartment in current existence will remain as shown on the plan, March twentieth, twenty twenty four, with minor interior modifications. Is that acceptable, Mr. Attorney Nicholson?
I did, you're comfortable with that?
I think that covers it. Thank you. Okay, great.
All right, roll call vote on approving the conditions. Paul Bernard.
In favor.
Mark Hampton.
In favor.
Herb Boden Sieg.
In favor.
All right, Hurwitz.
In favor.
And I also am in favor. So the special prior modification is granted. Now the variance twenty twenty four dash zero two four. Someone want to tackle that?
I don't have it in front of me.
All right, I will make a motion to approve the modification. Variance number twenty twenty three dash zero, that's a typo, I think. Twenty twenty four dash zero two three, uh, zero two four. On the top of the staff report, I believe that's a typo, right?
That is a typo, that's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Two ninety seven Winter Street LLC has petitioned to amend variance number nineteen sixty six dash zero four five and nineteen seventy two dash zero nine six pursuant to section two forty eleven A. Principal uses in the RV district, petitioners seek to amend the variance to permit proposed alteration of a dentist's office into a thousand thirty five square foot three bedroom apartment. The subject property is located two ninety seven Winter Street. Hyannis, Massachusetts, shown on assessors map three ten as parcel two oh eight. It's located in the residence B, RB zoning district. The subject property consists of a point two three acres and is located at the corner of Spruce Street and Winter Street. Area is a single family residential with a mixture of lot size and dwelling size. According to assessors records, the lot is currently developed with a one commercial building, fourteen hundred ninety nine square feet of living area, twenty one fifty eight gross constructed in nineteen thirty. Property has the benefit of two variances and one special permit. Variance number nineteen sixty six zero four five and nineteen seventy two dash zero nine six and special permit nineteen sixty eight one three five. For variance findings, to modify the variance number twenty twenty four dash zero two four and nineteen sixty six dash zero four five and nineteen seventy two dash zero nine six to allow the proposed alteration of the existing dentist's office into the three bedroom apartment. All other conditions will remain in effect. As we, as we find here, variance number twenty twenty four, the modification is minor and we think it follows the spirit and intent of the neighborhood affected. And we are not making full variance findings because they were previously made in nineteen sixty six dash zero four five and nineteen seventy two dash zero nine six. Do I have a second?
Second.
To make special modification to variance. A roll call vote. Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Paul Bernard.
In favor.
Mark Hampton.
In favor.
Herb Boden Sieg.
In favor.
And then I will propose conditions one through four. Do we need to make a fifth to reference? I don't think we need to get into the one bedroom apartment here. I think that's fine and leaving a special permit. Do I have a second to approve with the conditions proposed on the staff report?
Second.
June eleventh, twenty twenty four. Roll call vote. Paul Bernard.
In favor.
Mark Hampton.
In favor.
Herb Boden Sieg.
In favor.
All right, Hurwitz.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. So Attorney Nicholson, Attorney Kenny, you guys have both the special permanent variance modifications.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody.
Thank you. Moving on correspondence, we received a Cape Cod Commission meeting notice from Brick Kiln Monopole. Tuesday, July second, twenty twenty four, a hearing notice and a Cape Cod Commission continued hearing notice for the Upper Valley YMCA Wednesday, July tenth, twenty twenty four. Anything we didn't anticipate, Jenna or anyone else? Nope. All right, upcoming meetings, July in person, July twenty fourth, online, August fourteenth in person, August twenty eighth, online. I'll make a motion to adjourn. I need a second.
Second.
Second poll.
Roll call vote to adjourn. Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
Yeah, I'm in favor.
In favor.
Herb Boden Sieg.
I'm as in favor as Aaron is.
Mark Hampton.
I'm in favor.
Paul Bernard.
Yo, I'm in favor.
And I am also in favor. Thank you guys. Thank you, David.